Here, we're going to start with our pledge to the flag and if we can have Austin Malater, if you can lead us to that flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Vickers? Travis? Lewandowski? Ayers?
Here.
Johnson? Shaw?
Here.
Lopez Caneva? Here. Okay, go ahead now, our National Merit finalist, Austin Malater.
Good evening, everyone. We'd like to welcome Senior Austin Malater and his mom and dad here this evening. Actually, we would like to welcome them back because Austin was here in September. Austin, can you come on up, please? So the reason why Austin is here yet again with us this evening is because if you recall back in September, Austin was named a National Merit Scholarship semifinalist. And just to remind you, Austin was a part of over 1.5 million juniors at the time who took the 2019 PSAT and MSQT test. And Austin scored within the top 1% of all those students who took that test, thus earning him the recognition of a semifinalist. Well, we are here this evening because Austin now has been recognized as a finalist from the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. How about a round of applause for Austin? So I have this resolution recognizing Austin Malater for achieving the status of National Merit finalist. Whereas Austin Malater, a current senior student at Lockport Township High School District 205, has achieved the status of National Merit finalist by the National Merit Scholarship Program. Whereas Austin Malater has brought honor and distinction to himself, his family, school, and community by achieving this respected status. Whereas Austin Malater was aided and guided in this achievement by his parents, Daniel and Tracy Malater, and Lockport Township High School teachers and guidance counselors. Now, therefore, be it resolved this 22nd day of February 2021 by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that Austin Malater is hereby recognized with his status of National Merit finalist by the National Merit Scholarship Program. All right. Austin?
Yeah.
Also, when I was notified last week by the National Merit Scholarship Program of Austin's finalist recognition, they also included a certificate that I would like to read. It says, "This certificate of merit is awarded to Austin H. Malater, who has advanced to finalist standing in the National Merit Scholarship Program of 2021 by demonstrating through distinguished performance high potential for future academic accomplishment."
Oh, wow. Great job, Austin. We've got to get Austin's parents up there. Come on, let's get a picture of everybody. Yeah, the whole thing. Dr. Green, you've got to join the squad up here. That didn't happen if you didn't have a picture.
Yeah. Parents, definitely. All right.
Okay.
It's a good-looking group. Great job. Congratulations, Austin.
Oh, Austin, on behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations to you and to your parents. You really brought a distinct award, you know, to our school and our community. We are very proud of you.
Can we thank you?
All right.
Congratulations, Austin.
Congratulations again. Okay, all right.
You probably have to note that Lisa.
Yes. Lisa left it.
7:03.
7:03.
Okay, moving on then to our student reports.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job, Karen.
Have a nice evening. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Thanks a lot, Austin. Congratulations. Great job.
Thank you.
Hi, we just kind of wanted to talk about some of the things we were planning for our future events. So this past week, we held a virtual bingo, bingo night.
It was so fun, I have to tell you.
We hosted with Andrew, which I think went really well. So some of their students attended as well as some of ours. We kind of had some turmoil with the snow and everything. It got pushed back, but it ended up being super, super fun. And I think it went really smoothly. And so we are kind of in the future looking forward to trying to collaborate with Andrew High School a little bit more with some of these virtual events and doing another bingo maybe. We had done trivia in the past and we are going to potentially try and collaborate with them on something like that. And then obviously working with their student government for some of those kind of ideas that they would want to put forward and collaborate with us on. So yeah, it went really well and we are looking forward to doing it again. And then the other event that I was going to kind of talk about was doing a college decision day for our seniors. And kind of, we already do it now, but we kind of wanted to extend this just to be something a little bit more, just like something a little bit bigger for throughout the whole school and kind of, you know, decorating the hallways and just really highlighting all the hard work that seniors have put in. And, you know, more than just wear your T-shirt to school and put your name on the wall and just do like pictures and kind of something fun. And I think all four of us tonight are seniors and I think we would really appreciate something like that. Obviously, that'd be something a little bit farther down the road, like near May, when those decisions are finalized and everybody has made their decision. But that's just something we kind of wanted to get sort of on the agenda soon, especially depending on whether, like, our schedule moving forward.
And then we're looking to do two more, like, Spirit Weeks. We want to do one kind of Spirit Week and it's going to be like trends that kind of happen and we're going to mark like the one-year anniversary of us leaving school with COVID. So that Thursday and Friday, we're going to do like a masquerade day so everybody can wear like super crazy masks.
Yeah, tying into our Spirit Week, one thing that we also worked with Mr. Alkaien is that we are going to hopefully get it. So if you participate for all five days of Spirit Week, you can get out of two Strava, like, that week's Stravas to just help encourage dress up and show your school spirit. Also, the week.
I don't like the timeless videos. I don't like being seen, like, I'm sorry.
The week before our spring break, we were hoping to tie that into our Spirit Break, which is revolving more around quarantine themes. Tying more into the student report when it comes to gym on the SEL learning. I know from what we've heard and us directly, we all love SEL learning.
Yeah.
Me personally, I wasn't like super into meditation and self-calming. And then, then I got into my classes like box breathing and visualization and it did help with like the de-stress movement. One thing that was reported was kind of a repetitiveness within the curriculum from last semester to this semester. Which I know everyone's given the same slideshows and it's like a new class. But I know my teacher personally, we don't really do the slideshows. We more do like yoga and mindfulness and what we're grateful for. So we think if we can move into like a larger expansion of the SEL into such like movement days, like if we did SEL in school and then focus more on like yoga on the at-home days, just to like get the full involvement on that, we could possibly grow into that less-stressed mindset.
And then another thing that students are worried about is maybe having some type of college and career workshops. I had the pleasure of working with Ms. Kishline and Ms. Flanagan in the career applications classes that had me prepared with dealing with scholarships, resumes, networking with people. And I'm learning about LinkedIn soon, so that's exciting. And I know a lot of other students don't have that opportunity, especially if they have an AP in honor workload. I do not, so I have the honor to work in career internship. And I wish that we had some type of way to show other students how to have their resumes done. I know Ms. Kishline was very adamant on having our resumes, our cover letters, how to follow up with colleges and internships before the process began in August and early September. So you already had your resume done, you already had your cover letter ready. And if we just had that type of career and college applications for everyone, at least the seniors, you know, that first, those first two months, I think that'd be very useful. And students also want some more counseling and just guidance. And we would also like some type of portfolio. We're not kind of, we're not quite sure what it would be yet, but maybe some way to show a student's growth over a period of time. So the counselors can look back and see how the student has grown from freshman to senior year. And they don't, they can interview you, but they kind of already have a connection with you. So something along those lines, just something like, like that. So that's what we are looking forward to and hope that will be implemented at our school.
Yeah, and I can personally say like for my course load, like all four years, I've been in pretty much solely honors and AP classes. And the college and career applications was not courses that I could fit into my schedule, but obviously we're teaching skills that I still very much needed.
I'm going to do my taxes this week, so.
I've applied to a lot of scholarships and I didn't know how to write a cover letter. I didn't know where to even start with some of those things. And I mean, obviously, we are all very blessed to have the internet at our fingers, but you know, it would definitely have been nice to get some of that within school. So I think that that would be just like a really awesome thing to do for our seniors. And I mean, something starting probably junior year, just to get ready for that senior year.
Yeah, for sure.
I think that's it.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Have a great evening. Thank you.
Honestly, I really only have one small piece and I just would like to publicly thank Dr. McBride and Mr. Kandari for the work that they did in helping staff get vaccinated. I mean, the last time I sat here, I was just looking forward to that opportunity. And then a week later, we're getting emails and I'm thrilled. So I think everybody's excited because we do, and we're so excited to be back. It does feel good, but it's, it's just good to be back in maybe a much more safe field to the whole thing. So that, that's really it for me for a report, but thank you very much, guys. We appreciate it. Yeah.
Thanks, Karen.
All right, IASB Governing Board Report. I do know that Kathy was, did put a little flyer there on the Three Rivers Spring Meeting, which is coming up March 4th at 5:30 and it's a Zoom meeting. So if you're planning to attend, just please let her know, okay? Unless anything else, Dr. McBride, do that?
I'll do it in my legislative report. I'll try to keep that brief. It's hard these days, so.
Okay, all right. Foundation Board Report.
Yes, good evening. One of the changes, as you all know, we actually brought on a full-time director who was sitting over here to my right, Kate Dean. And there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes right now because we're not really doing the events and things like that. So I suggested to Kate that she come and update you on some of the things that she's doing. And she is here to let them know.
Hello, everybody. As Dr. McBride talked about in the January board meeting, working on a lot of marketing materials, working on a website, getting to know the board and grow the board. We're having two members to be voted on in our Tuesday meeting. There's another potential member who's going to come to the meeting to see how they like it and if they want to proceed further with joining the board and get more of a feel for it, making a lot of community connections. I had gone to a chamber event in January. I'd gone to a couple more. I went to a Lockport Women's Meeting with Janine Wheeler. There's another ribbon cutting for the holiday and I'm going to go to March 3rd, so I'm excited about that. They're very, they're awesome people there. I've met them before. We are moving forward again with the golf outing. It's June 16th. If anybody wants to come, it'll be at the Prairie Bluff Golf Course. Probably the biggest thing that I've been working on is a partnership with Sitco. They've offered a grant to be in the rebuild of the media center that's going to happen in East, hopefully in the summer. Dr. McBride and I have talked to them about being involved in a couple of projects and they really seem to be interested in being a part of this rebuild and having some kind of room or function that would relate to STEM education. And so we're going to propose to them a digital creation studio where students and staff will be able to do, you know, podcasting, video production, television promotion, you know, and really engage in the creative side of STEM. So I'm excited about that. We're going to hand in the proposal this week. And I've also talked to DLA Architects with matching part of Sitco's grant funding and they've already accepted and have given us the money, so that's awesome. And on Tuesday, I'm going to talk to the Foundation Board about maybe matching the rest of that money so that there would be a more impactful project. So I'm excited about that. That's awesome. I'm going to look into having a Young Hearts for Life event possibly at the school and working with that. I don't know how soon with COVID, but maybe just finding out the details about having that here. Always trying to come up with COVID-friendly programming events that we could possibly have now and sooner. So that's always on, on my mind. And really planning for the next year or so, so that there's a solid plan for the foundation, both in board governance and events, so we can have, be able to tell people like, hey, these are the events we're having this year and this is what we want to be involved in. You know, planning for some corporate sponsorships, again, that would, you know, start over that, you know, once a year instead of having to go back to the same company over and over. They could give us a lump sum and they would know what that money is going towards and what the foundation's going to do with that. And we're going to start trying to put together an alumni association. So it's been busy, but it's going good. Is there any questions or comments?
You've done a lot in a short time.
I commend you for that.
You should do better job than I would. Come on. Great job.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Legislative Report.
Legislative Report. And I would say Alumni Association. I sat down at Cole College with my daughter for an interview in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, and I happened to have an LTHS mask on. And the admissions counselor informed said, "What is that?" And I said, "Lockport Township High School." And she said, "My parents went there." So it's just, you know, we're everywhere. Porters are everywhere. Well, I'm going to try to make this brief. Springfield is trying to catch up. Anne Lopez Caneva, Luanne Johnson, myself, we attended on February 13th the Three Rivers Legislative Breakfast, which was really great. We had a lot of access with our legislators, very bipartisan. I always like to see that from the more urban areas of, of our area to the more suburban, all the way to more rural. But Springfield's catching up. They've got a shortened session in March, which is supposed to last probably only about five weeks. 4,000 bills have been introduced. 400 of those are education and you know, board members, the process. Most of those will not, you know, make it to the floor. But that's, that's, that's a lot of work to do. In one of those bills, I think something that we should really pay attention to is House Bill 40, which was introduced last week. And what House Bill 40 does is it proposes one additional year for special education for transition students. So presently, our transition students in the CCC go all the way until, if they elect, they don't have to, they're not required to, but all the way until basically their 22nd birthday. And then they transition beyond high school. Well, beyond the CCC, I should say. They've already transitioned beyond high school. This bill would extend that an additional year so that when students turn 23, then they would transition from a program like our transition program, the CCC. So keeping our eye on that. Couple of things to be, just to update the budget, quite a bit of discussion. There's a good news and bad news in the Governor's Budget Address last week. As promised, funding for education will be flat, which means that our evidence-based funding will not decline. That sounds like good news, but very controversial. For the past four years, since we've had evidence-based funding, the state has made a $350 million contribution to education. The Governor's Budget does not plan on making that funding. And that really is the plan to solve the $1.9 billion shortfall that the state has. The good news for the state is that property taxes, sales tax, and other excise revenues have not dropped as much as the state anticipated. But holding everything flat is really the strategy. Why that's significant for us is that our evidence-based funding is a three-year average. So when that funding doesn't occur, that $350 million, it could, in the long run, impact what's called our adequacy level. So much like when we talk about our tax levy, you know, if one year we really stepped significantly back from our tax levy, you carry that with you in subsequent years. And this could be the case with not funding evidence-based funding this year. It might create an impact on our adequacy rate that could be with us for quite a few, few years. So watching that very carefully. COVID-19, legislators at the breakfast talked extensively about COVID-19. Where there was most discussion, you know, Mrs. Lopez Caneva could comment on this too, was about social emotional health of students. The recognition that our students are really struggling, feeling isolated, disconnected. There was bipartisan support for social work, school counselors, and that always gets to if there would be funding for that and special programs for that. Police reform bill, board members might have heard quite a bit. Today, the governor signed the police reform bill, which has sweeping reforms really in life outside of school, which obviously can impact life inside of school. The security officer and SRO bill that was proposed to eliminate that from schools. In the, in the breakfast, Representative Anne Staba Murray, she was part of the breakfast but couldn't stay when we started talking about that. But Representative Staba Murray has withdrawn that from consideration. So that's not moving forward. Cultural competency standards, a lot going on in the state with the cultural competency standards. And those are standards that were now adopted that are primarily impact teacher preparation. There are some things that are recommended or suggested at Boards of Education, like having an equity plan, doing equity professional development. But there's standards, if you hear about them, that are primarily for college preparation for future teachers and getting their, their license. And then finally, I have some hot off-the-press news for you. 692 of us in the state of Illinois, superintendents, in the State of Illinois Superintendents signed a letter that went to the new Secretary of Education, asking that in 2021, more out of time than out of accountability, that we not have accountability testing. For us, it would be April 13th, April 14th, the PSAT and the SAT. Just this evening, the state announced that that was rejected. And so what is being offered to districts is the assessments need to move forward, but the state will offer waivers for accountability. What that means is districts can apply, in essence, to have those scores not reflected on their Illinois State Report Card and in their summative designation as exemplary, commendable, needing improvement, unsatisfactory. So the tests will move forward. It's more of an impact on our elementary district friends who have to spend about six days testing, where we would spend April 13th and 14th, and we have a plan for that. So what's going on with legislation?
Thank you. Okay, moving on then, Communications, Dr. Shaw?
We received a note from Betty Colino thanking the Board of Education Administration and Staff for expressions of sympathy and a donation to the Northern Illinois Food Bank in memory of her husband, Mike. Betty is a longtime staff member, currently the Administrative Assistant for Dr. Carrie Green.
Thank you. All right, Karen, you have your freedom of information there listed. Okay, all right, Public Comments.
I think Dr. Shaw is seeing if we have any.
Okay. Let's see. A designated portion of the Board Meeting is set aside to hear comments on topics listed on the agenda. Person wishing to speak must sign in and provide all information requested on the sign-in sheet, including the agenda item they will be addressing. The Board President will call speakers up by name, announcing their name, their time to comment. A time limit of five minutes per speaker per agenda topic will be imposed. The purpose of requesting such information on the sign-in sheet is to obtain the correct spelling of the name of the speaker and contact information, which will be used for any necessary Board follow-up. And there is none.
There are none.
Okay. All right, moving on then to Approval of Our Regular Meeting Minutes of January 25th to 2021. Do I have a motion on that?
So.
All right.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Ives and seconded by Dr. Shaw to approve the regular meeting minutes of January 25th, 2021. Are there any questions? There's none. Roll call.
Travis.
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Bicas?
Yes.
Lopez-Caniva?
Yes.
All right, moving on, we'll have the approval of the closed session meeting minutes of January 25th, 2021.
So.
Sorry.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions on that? Hearing none. Roll call. Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Bicas?
Yes.
Lopez-Caniva?
Yes.
Our next, Approval of the Treasurer's Report, January 2021. Need a motion for that?
So.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ives and seconded by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions on those? Hearing none. Roll call. Bicas?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez-Caniva?
Yes.
All right, then, moving on to our Superintendent Update.
All right, great. What I was going to hope to do tonight, sort of my lesson plan with Board Members, was first just do some of my information pieces, and really, those are acknowledgements. And then, we won't reconvene until after March 12th, and that's an important date, because our current calendar, our website for instruction and the platform that we use, only goes through March 12th. There is school after March 12th, and really, just maybe engage in a conversation with you and have a moment to kind of hear your thoughts. I hope I can call out your thoughts about what that should look like, and maybe sharing with you the fractures and fissures that are, they're starting to be in, to form across the state as, as different districts do different things. I had a Superintendent in our Athletic Conference who shared in a meeting today that he just filled his gym Friday night. And just, that's the way they did it, pep band and cheer, and, and that's, you're starting to see that, primarily downstate, smaller, smaller high schools, but, but things that we have to be aware of. So if you'd permit me just a few acknowledgements, you know, it's so good to see Austin. That's a staggering thing when, when Dr. Green, Dr. Green and, excuse me, said, you know, 1.5 million students took the PSAT. National Merit finalist is top 1%. But last Friday, I was so humbled and on Thursday, to acknowledge another top 1% that we sometimes don't think of. And that would be the 13 students, or nine students. We had 13 nine grads last June, and nine of them graduated in December. And they were part of our Park Program. And a really amazing crew of Park Teachers, Dana Kapko, Jamison Oster, Eileen Sullivan, with the help of Matt Bartley, the intrepid Matt Bartley, and then Dr. Webb Ray, who really coordinated a number of things. And I think Angela Huntington, I think she might be right here, cheerleading it on too, literally delivered bunt cakes, diplomas to homes of these students who are in extraordinary circumstances. One student, for example, woke up because he was working an overnight shift for Amazon. One young woman came to the door with a baby in hand. And the reason why I mention that top 1% is because in the United States of America, very few, almost none, 13th graders graduate from high school. And very few even get a GED. So this is a really proud moment for our district and those educators in particular, to be at those doors, walk up, touch you to snow, and just say, hey, this really matters, and here is your diploma. So just shouting that out. Really want to thank Karen Cooper and for everyone who signed up. It is true that Tony Kindari and I were like schoolchildren, watching the sign-ups as they, as they came in. So much credit for educator vaccination. I really haven't seen in political life, things happen so quickly. It was a Friday, I can't remember the date, I apologize, the plan that we were walking through with Will County was not a feasible plan. DuPage County has a similar plan, and they're really struggling right now. And that Monday morning, a few Superintendents, Dr. Scott Tingley at Lincoln Way, and I talked, and we really said, listen, can we make some phone calls to people and work on a mass vaccination clinic? And really, by the end of the day, those wheels were in motion with Silver Cross, St. Joe's, and we are on the road to getting 5,000 educators vaccinated. I'm going to have my second vaccine tomorrow, so hopefully I have an okay day on Wednesday. So that was amazing. So great thanks to, to just so many people being involved, to our staff, just for following tedious procedures we gave them. To Tony, for, for really overseeing that, for political conversations. A lot, a lot of thanks goes to Jennifer Bertino-Tarrant, who was here yesterday. She's really been a mover and shaker on this, and being a good listener, too, more than anything else. Over the weekend, we vaccinated 1,600 people right here. That was a partnership between myself, just reaching out on your behalf, to Will County Fire District. And it was amazing. Those of us who worked it, seniors crying, seniors thankful, making it easy for seniors. Like I said, the Will County Executive, she was here yesterday. But I think all of you as Board Members would be very proud of so many people, but Tim Ross, Matt Bartley, Trish Sermon, Bill Thompson, really his whole crew, just shined. It really showed, we're made for this. Big high school buildings are made for this. Please let us do this, so we can make it easy on our senior citizens, especially. Also, I just wanted to say, you know, we've completed now six weeks, and we've worked with our two-by-two system of two weeks in remote, two weeks in person, two weeks in remote, now two weeks in person. And through that, we've had miserable winter weather. And a lot of thanks goes to our Director of Transport, Dave Nitesball. He's one of those just humble people that I'm calling at 3:50 a.m. during snowstorms and talking about the roads. Just really an outstanding job. We've gone from, you know, what we're trying to do with that schedule, and we'll talk about it in a few minutes, is reduce the number of students on quarantine. On November 10th, we had 20% of our students on quarantine, which makes it so difficult for our teachers. Right now, we're, we kind of went up, and then we went remote, and we're back down. We're at a, from a high-water mark at the end of our last in-person period of 128 students on quarantine. Today, we're at 46. So we don't want to see 20% again, 2.6% of our students on quarantine. We can live with that. As you know, we're in this room right now because we're in Phase Four of the mitigations. But Phase Five, which is, we are really out of it, that still seems a distant horizon. Just a couple of other announcements. It was really a pleasure, on Thursday, February 11th, I joined some other educators from New York, and then one Superintendent from Texas, right before things went really challenging in Texas. And we presented the work that our whole team, when I'm presenting, I'm really not representing myself, I'm representing a whole team of Lori Christopher and Jen Webb Ray and Matt Dusterhoff, of what we're doing with Forecast Five Analytics and representing data. And, and really, the, when we show data, people show surprise. And this is, again, a really a tribute to our teachers, and it's a story that should be told, that people are surprised by our failure rate. Yeah, we have a failure rate, but it is marginal compared to what other people in the country are reporting. Our teachers are reaching out to students for afternoon appointments. We have a robust amount of As and Bs. We have all sorts of ways that we've developed to track students and get them help. And that has been so helpful in this pandemic. It is nice pivoting to athletics. It is nice to run into athletes. We have a girls' basketball varsity game, they're doing very well, going on. And two really amazing things, Mike Dwyer, I think, has put his heart and soul in making this safely run, and, you know, finding out at the last minute, you're going to have all these sports, and then making it happen. And pretty neat, Jeff Krone is web streaming all of our, most of our events. So you can watch so many contests now from the comfort of your own home. So two people that are really getting a lot done. Final thing, I was just going to thank and just to make Board Members aware, on February 12th, we had our second Police Youth Forum. We really talked with Student Equity Action about security inside of our buildings. So lots of thanks to Dr. John Greenan, Matt Bartley, Travanna Green, Ryan Russell, Ryan Visser, Janine Wheeler, Frank DeSandro, and Dave Cullen for that conversation with our students. Our two Lockport Community Service Officers over at the PD would like to come back and meet, and that was an in-person meeting on March 12th. So just having that dialogue illuminates so many things about what we do with security and with safety. So let me pause there and maybe open it up to Board Members. I can share a great deal of information, all of which is encapsulated in this. Across the state, even within our feeder district, there are differences sort of cropping up everywhere, and the differences are along these lines. Six feet, a really important number. We are in hybrid because we have been told by the CDC, and we've been recommended by the IDPH, that the distance between people gathered like we are should be six feet whenever feasible. And that we really shouldn't gather in a single space, like in this room, more than 50 people. So that's been an enormous driver. What's happening is people are looking more at the phrase, when feasible, as optional. So Board Members will start to hear, I think some of our, our feeder districts are starting to bring in a higher volume of students. For example, Manuka High School just opened up for four days at 100%, and most of the schools downstate are at 100%. Friday, we were with Will County Public Health. We're still being advised with the variants that are coming and becoming dominant, that six feet is the safest thing to do. But there's a great deal of difference of opinion, and even within our own community. And I shared on Friday with Board Members, some of the emails, that, that people would like us to go a different direction. And I understand that. The other debate is over quarantine procedures. We are still being told the safest thing to do is quarantine people exposed, symptomatic, or positive with COVID is for 14 days. But that obviously creates a situation for students if we have to exclude them for 14 days. An answer to that has been screening, testing, doing testing ourselves. More products are available, more people are doing testing, more are approved by the FDA. Something called the Binax Card, which is free through Will County, has been approved for, it was previously only approved for symptomatic individuals, it's now been approved for surveillance. If I was exposed to COVID, I could come in, use a Binax Card, it's a rapid test, and decide if I should be quarantined or not. Many people are speculating that we might have to do surveillance testing even next year. Those are kind of the issues that right now are on the table. I just really want to open it up to Board Members, where you'd like to see us go after March 12. We had a Staff Town Hall today. I don't want to speak for everybody. Certainly, this wasn't the opinion of every staff member in that town hall. There's about well over 150. But overwhelming, when I reflected on the comments, this isn't scientific, our, our teachers are ready just to move forward with hybrid. It's difficult for me to see us moving ahead with something like in-person learning for, or even five days a week at this point. But let's, I want to open it up to Board Members, and just what you're hearing, what you're thinking, what, what questions can I answer?
So when we are in person, from what I've gotten gathered from the Board Notes, our person-to-person transmission in the building is substantially low.
It's been zero.
Given the mitigation efforts that we've put forth.
Right. It's, so far this year, we have no person-to-person transmission.
So what we can see from what we're doing is that that person-to-person transmission is not happening within the school building. Majority of the transmission is happening outside of the school building. Okay.
You're right, Dr. Shaw.
Okay, so, given that, I would feel comfortable as a Board Member saying that, you know, I would like to see a hybrid plan beyond this that, you know, could extend longer than two weeks on, two weeks off. I don't know how everybody else feels, but.
That was the general consensus, you know, from the, from the staff. That wasn't everything.
Which, which I feel very good about. I'm happy that the teachers, now that they're getting vaccinated and, you know, things are happening, that they're feeling more comfortable being in the building.
I mean, considering that, yeah, I feel like the same thing with the hybrid, you know, schedule, only because we have such a huge student population, and we don't want to bring them all back at once, you know, it would be just too detrimental. I mean, it would be just, we don't have enough space to, for that student having the six feet. It is.
And one thing for Board Members to share with Board Members, it is a volume issue of, of students. You know, in most of our classrooms, the way that they're designed, when, when we're seating students, they're, they're less than, they're probably max one feet head-to-head. I would have to have Bill Thompson actually do this, but my kind of just early looking in classrooms is, even if we went to three feet, we probably would be bringing three additional desks in the size rooms that we have. So still separating desks out, I'm not convinced that even if we went to the three-feet separation that many districts are, and those are mainly K through eight districts, if they're not downstate, and the high school districts that are, much smaller populations. I was talking to the Superintendent of Vienna High School District Downstate, much smaller than us in terms of total population. We're not, we don't, I don't believe we would get more students in that actual room, which is really, really challenging. I think there's a great desire on the part of our public to move into four days a week, to offer four days a week. I do want to share with Board Members, and it's, it's my opinion, just from all the meetings that I've gone to, many of our constituents are hearing that school districts are opening up the option to their families to go four days a week. That is the case in my own child's school district. But also, those districts are having a problem that we're not having. They're having a problem with attendance. We've maintained through this whole pandemic, huge tribute to everyone, 96%, 97% attendance. So that's a complexity. You know, just other, I kind of saw you thinking, Lisa, or, you know.
I just, I'm wondering about the
I, I just, I'm, I'm wondering about the CDC, the fourteen days. I thought it was down to seven. So for.
It is, we, we could select, that's only for adults.
Okay.
And that depends on if you've, you have COVID, is it that you have COVID symptoms, or you've been COVID exposed.
Yeah, just clarification.
Students, the, you could move to a ten-day for students. Ten days or fourteen days. And, and we just, you know, our, our numbers with our adults, I, I, I think overall, you know, Tony, you could chime in on this. I think overall, so many of our staff have been really careful. And it just, we haven't had high numbers of COVID-positive, we haven't had high numbers of quarantine. That's not to say we had none.
Right.
It's really the, the students that's been a difficulty.
Well, like Dr. Shaw said, most of our ca, if not, all of our cases are from outside. You know, it's not our in-person learning that's, that's creating the COVID either. I just think we need to continue with the success that we've had. I understand that our parents think we should all go all-in. I'm an all-in person. I'm about herd immunity. I've said this a hundred times. I've, I've got my, I've had my entire staff in, but I only hit twenty-two since July twenty-second. Big difference than having four thousand students together. I wouldn't want to cause any harm to our teachers, our, our administration, our students, because all of a sudden we went all-in, and then we're all-out. You know, so it's a big difference. I think we, we can find the success. Everybody in this, everybody here, the administration and the staff has worked towards that, and you guys have done a fantastic job. I don't, it, it's difficult to find the secret sauce, but you guys managed to do it, and I think I'm going to leave it up to you guys to figure that out, not me.
Well, and, and we, you know, certainly I can say, on behalf of all the administrators behind me, we appreciate that. You know, I hope we've earned that trust. We, in August, we approved a plan.
Right.
You, you voted for that seven-oh, I think, thinking that we would competently, safely, equitably, with learning in mind, flexibility, and keeping communication. I hope, you know, there might have been changes, there might have been
Sure.
times that we had unpredictable things, but I hope we did not waver in those five pillars, and really focusing in on those.
Yeah, I think it's very amazing that we got so many teachers to get vaccinated. I was there Sunday. I was once saying, "I'm not doing this," but I did it. I did it because I want to see my parents. I want to, I want to be able to walk freely again. So I think it's, I had to do that leadership, just like everyone else here is doing that. But we can't live in fear either, but I think you guys will find that secret sauce to get us to continue where we are. You know, to continue to have our students feel comfortable, and just a testimony to those seniors up here. They'll find it too. They'll figure out how to make this happen for themselves as well. So.
Mr. Travis, Mr. Ives, want to just, I know you're talking to neighbors and.
Oh, yeah.
I've had other teachers and different administrators from different schools, grade school, comment on how we're doing a great job. And I also agree that you guys are doing a fantastic job. And I'm also with Ms. Shaw about not moving too fast. I'm not one for all-in right away. I think the, the mood, the, the way we're going, I think, is a good way. So I'm happy with how, you know, things are going right now.
And, and, you know, I, I would not want to be, you know, sort of an echo chamber of self-congratulations. I hope that's not what I'm presenting on behalf of these guys. They, they know, I just had a recent bout of losing sleep over next week because we're going to alter the schedule. That's not what we want to do for ourselves, for our teachers, for our families. But really came down to, with the mass vaccination, we, we did not have a choice of what days. Silver Cross couldn't manage it if they had to boutique it for every district. And just knowing that we would have a hundred frontline personnel, even if fifty percent of those on March fifth feel too ill, we would lose another in-person day. So it's maneuvers like those, when we have to tell our community, our teachers, we're going to go in a different direction, that, you know, I, I can't profess, you know, Mr. Travis, that we're perfect in any way. Mr. Ives, you going to say something? Apologize?
Ah, that's all right. We let Mr. Travis go. I think, no, I echo everyone that's done a great job. And I, I think it's our best leadership position here is to let those who live it every day, and what they've learned and what they've put into practice, let them continue because it's worked quite well. You know, I, I would defer whatever the, the teachers and the administration recommend, I'll support it. I, I do want to stay, you know, in the hybrid environment. It works. And I think, you know, I think Lockport's been leading by example, and a lot of school districts have been looking at that, saying, "They got it done right." So I fully support what you've done and where you're going, and we'll get there. We'll get there slowly, but we're going to get there.
I, I think our timeline this week, we did a town hall, as always, very well attended. We'll do another one. I think we'll have more people on Thursday come to a staff town hall, probably more questions, more conversation. Dr. Greenan and Dr. Green are working with our department chairs to get them to weigh in. You know, I'll be reaching out. Karen Cooper and Erica Lang work with us on the steering committee. They're very busy this, these days. But checking in with them about after March twelve. You know, obviously updating you on Friday, and I think where we're trying to go is maybe by Friday, having a straw design of what we see after March twelfth, and then announcing that to our parents next week, so they can start making plans. Any other questions? Anything you're hearing? I can clarify. I can. There's a, there's a high level of confusion. I can tell you that right now. We are at, the numbers of COVID are low, that's good. But the confusion about what to do about that really good news is very high. So that is my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on then to our consent agenda item. Just need a motion for our consent agenda items from one, number one through six. Is there a motion?
Make the motion. Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Ms. Bickus and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions to any of those consent agenda items? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Bickus?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes. Okay, next we'll have our action consideration items. We'll start with the approval of the student transportation intergovernmental agreement. Just need a motion for that. I can, I can make the motion.
Sorry.
Is it on? I'm sorry?
Didn't we skip the policies?
No, not, not yet.
Oh.
We're, we're coming up.
Okay. I'm sorry. Sorry. All right, it's been motioned by Lopez Caniva, second by Mr. Travis. Sorry for the approval of student transportation intergovernmental agreement. Are there any questions to that? Hearing none, roll call.
Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Bickus?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes. All right, next we have the approval of intergovernmental co-op, co-op agreement to provide food services to District eighty-nine and District ninety-one. Just need a motion for that?
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Travis and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions to that? All right, roll call.
Travis?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Bickus?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes. All right, approval of a two-year lease for two pass, two fourteen-passenger activity buses.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Ms. Bickus and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions to that? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Bickus?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes. All right, next we have the approval of the structural life safety repair central, at Central Campus. Need a motion for that?
I'll move.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Ives and second by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions to that?
Have we ever used road masonry?
We, we have not personally, but the, the OIA has used them on projects before. And, yeah, they, and, yeah, they had it recommended.
Great. Okay, that was my next question.
And one of the, you know, we shared with the board, our strategy has been to do some of these projects now to get the cost savings of people looking to do, you know, this kind of work. So we're, you know. We, we originally, our estimate was five hundred thousand, and we're coming in with the lowest responsible bidder. It had about a hundred and fifty thousand last minute, so.
Okay. All right, roll call.
Ives?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Bickus?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes. Right next, we have the approval of the press one oh six, second reading, the adoption.
If there's any questions, I can, I answer, you know, what's loaded up for board members. All the red lines for all the policies. You'll notice if you open up that seventy-five, seventy-four-page press document, it's very tedious. The slides help to carry, carry through just the minor changes. Really, all of these are primarily minor changes that either create cross-references, create updates to new case law, or relate to things in other policies that the board approved to press one oh four and one oh five. And now these are a set of policies that have to come along with that.
All right, well, thank you. All right, we just need a motion for that. I can make that motion. All right, it's been motioned by Lopez Caniva, second by Ms. Bickus. Roll call.
Bickus?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes. Public comments on topics not listed on the agenda. A designated portion of the board meeting is set aside to hear comments on topics not listed on the agenda. A person wishing to speak must sign in and provide all information requested on the sign-in sheet, including the topic they will be addressing. The board president will call speakers up by name, announcing their time to comment. The time limit of five minutes per speaker per agenda topic will be imposed. The purpose of requesting such information on the sign-in sheet is to obtain the correct spelling of the name of the speaker and contact information, which will be used for any necessary board follow-up. And there is none. There is none. Okay. All right, going on to our information reports, principals report.
We are so very excited to be here in person with all of you.
So are we.
We're excited to be here in person.
Thanks for having us here. We are very excited with our report because there's so many activities taking place, and our kids are getting back involved and connected with the school. If you take a look at our activities report, our Jet Science Club, they actually did an academic challenge at Eastern Illinois and finished second in regionals, so they're advancing onto sectionals. Our Porter players hopefully had an opportunity to log on to the COT and One Ax, the virtual show. They really did some outstanding performances. So we're so proud of those students. And we had three students from our speech team actually advance to sectionals, so we're very excited about that. And then our other science program, the Pilots Science Club, they actually are taking a, a virtual field trip this week to Argonne Lab. And what they do is they partner with the scientists there on some of their semester projects, and they talk about data collection and daily operations. So that's very exciting to get our students out and about, back with the professionals, so that they can learn from them as well. And then student government, you heard them come here tonight. We had our spirit week, the week of February first, with the dress-up days, and the executive board did a phenomenal job with doing the virtual bingo. Even though we had to postpone it, they connected great with Andrew High School, you know, so they have some direct connections there. And so they're very excited about that and looking for more opportunities to engage our students. On the athletic side, our boys' basketball, they had a tough schedule to start off, but they are now four and two. Great wins last week against Lincoln Way East and stag just this past weekend. Girls' basketball, they're in there tonight for their senior night versus Andrew. They are now off to a three-and-two start. Boys' bowling, they've excelled in all of their dual meets. They won all those dual matches, and they actually competed in a tournament that was stacked with talent this weekend. We're actually proud of their fourth-place finish. And the girls' bowling program, they are undefeated, and they are defending state champs, so they are looking to make another run. But right now, they're really focused on that SWSC crown. Cheer, they've had two virtual performances or competitions, and all three levels, the freshman, the JV, and the varsity, have won. They swept both competitions, so we're very excited about that. Our dance also performed well. They had two virtual competitions as well. And then Badminton, they have five wins in the dual competition, and they are actually, don't know the outcome, but they were facing Sandberg tonight. If you have not already, subscribe to our YouTube channel that Dr. McBride mentioned. Please subscribe because we are going to try to get as much as we possibly can on there so that all of our spectators and community members can watch what our kids are doing. So we're so very excited to have them back competing and engaged.
Carrie and I continue to meet with our climate and culture committee that we have here at LTHS, which is comprised of over fifty staff members. And we have four subcommittees within the climate and culture committee: celebrations, physical space, language, and onboarding. And one of the highlights that we are excited to announce, in fact, it was just unveiled last night, this morning, is Porter Madness, as our celebrations committee continue to work together to think about what we can do for our staff. Of course, very much our students are our first priority. We talk about what type of schedule we're going to be on. We're talking about what we can do to salvage certain events for our students this year. We don't want to forget about our staff either, and we've lost out on a lot of the usual events that we have for staff camaraderie. So our celebrations committee unveiled, like I said last night, early this morning, the bracket for the ninety-six members of our LTHF staff who are going to compete in a free throw competition tournament. So that, the, the opening round begins this week. Each individual staff member contributed five dollars, which is going to go to the family of the late Joe Lewandowski, so we're very proud of that. And we will be excited to report to you who our champion is.
A lot of hype and excitement around this.
Yeah, it won't be at next month's board meeting. It would be in the, the April one, so we're, we're excited about that. For discipline and for attendance, we're very proud that discipline incidents continue to remain low, and attendance figures very strong, as Dr. McBride alluded to. Not to be repetitive, because I feel like every month we talk about our dean's office and our guidance staff working together to identify some of our students who are struggling, who are at risk. But it's very important to mention, because it's a big reason why our discipline incidents are low and our attendance is so strong, is because our teachers, our deans, our guidance staff continue to work very well together to engage our students and to target those students who are having a little bit of a hard time, as our attendance continues to push ninety-six percent. And we're very proud of that. And we know that we have work to do, and we also want to thank our families as, as well for the reason why, again, discipline incidents remain low and attendance is strong. Carrie, do you have anything else to add?
And just want to thank our assistant principals. Over when we were remote, they were actually bringing students who were at risk and struggling a little bit. They were bringing in students into the building and having, not only engaging them in their Google meets, but also having other activities to make those connections back to the building, you know, with themselves, us, with the deans, and with their guidance counselors. And the kids were very receptive, and we think that that really went well. So we're hoping to foster those connections. Thank you to Lori for allowing us to also use some of our, our title money to put in interventionists, which we think are really going to help with some of these students as well, to help kind of stay on them and keep track of them and engage them into the LTHS culture as well.
And I also want to thank Dr. Huntington and the special education staff to make sure that that does not go unnoticed. The times that we have shifted back to being full remote, we still have some of our modified program students coming into the building, which is the importance of that. You can't put value on that. So want to make sure that we recognize Dr. Huntington and the special education department as well. And now we would like to ask if you have any questions for us or like us to elaborate on anything.
Jerry, I do like the YouTube, watching the, the games on there. I don't know how it's set up in, in, in the gym, I, you know, because I noticed one of the things you're getting YouTube, you're getting live, you're getting parent comment, not the chat, we get rid of that. But the parent comments, I don't know if there's a way to structure them, maybe keep them a little farther away, because there's some stuff coming out that I'm like, ooh, I'm sure they don't want to know that. Who said that? But I don't know, you know, how, how we can regulate anything like that, but it's just, I love it. I mean, it's, you know. I'd rather go, but I can't go, so I, I watch it.
Sure. Well, we could share that with Mr. Dwyer and.
Just, I, I'm just asking, it's an observation if you could pass it on. I'm just asking, it's an observation if you could pass it on.
Thank you.
Apparently not. Not everyone agrees with the referees. New news.
I always did when I coached.
Right.
My, my question, Dr. Green, is no first-round bye for the superintendent?
I didn't get one either.
We didn't have anything to do with it.
I didn't get one either.
It was a randomizer for the pairings. That's what we were told anyways.
Apparently some of our administrators are in the tournament and didn't sign up. How did that happen? I don't know.
I think there was a quick.
Yes. What do you mean by a 96% attendance rate? Does that mean like 96% of the students have not received like disciplinary actions for being?
Uh, no, our attendance rate, that, that is a separate category from our discipline incidents. So our, the attendance rate, that, what, what that means is that for the month of January, for the report that was presented for this particular board meeting, we had 95.5% of an average attendance throughout the month of January.
So that means all of the students?
Across the board. Across the board.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yes.
Okay.
So I, I want to commend our assistant principals as well. I have two family members in the school that have two children that are at risk, and they tell me what a wonderful job they've done bringing them into school and getting them here. So let them know. They've done a fantastic job, and they're doing much better. So, yeah, so let them know that.
Thank you. You guys are doing a phenomenal job.
Yeah.
We're excited. Today was a great day having the kids back in the building.
Sure.
It was awesome.
Especially because the weather cooperated too.
Principal Green invited us all to watch her shoot in the first round, so we can't wait to see that.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to then to our information reports, the 2021-2022 calendar. It's going to get here before we know it, right?
Board members, big announcement tonight. There will be a school year next year, you know? We, yes, we're going forward. So I want to just share the process. I'm going to very briefly highlight some things today at our Staff Town Hall. We also briefed our, our staff on what we're proposing to you tonight. Not all that radically altered from last year. There is in your folder for this evening, if it's easier for you to look at a paper copy of the overview, there's also a paper copy as well. You might ask yourself, why is this option 3A? As I did last year with Karen Cooper and our union's help, I convened a committee of about 14 people. Number of the administrators behind me joined in, listened in. We met for three sessions. And we started with option one, which morphed into option two, which morphed into option three, and then option 3A was ultimately in our last meeting, what we built a consensus around, thus, thus the name. Really, an extraordinary job by that committee because I was so pleased that in addition to our department chairs weighing in, our ministers weighing in, did an extraordinary job polling their colleagues about what kind of calendar would assist in their work. Of course, this might have draft marked all over it. We hope that this is the calendar that we, if you approve, run next year. But, but as we've learned from where we were a year ago at this time till now, things can change. Just a few things to highlight. A priority remains for our teaching staff of having final exams before winter break commences. And the reason why I mention that high priority is because once that decision is made, getting to 176 instructional days, getting to four institute days as required by school code, sort of forces other things to happen. And it almost immediately determines when the beginning of the year will be and when the end of the year will be. There are a number of people on the committee that would like to see the start of the year move as deep into August as possible to preserve a few weeks of summer in August. Very difficult to do that and have balance between first semester and second semester. Also, a number of people would prefer to end before Memorial Day. That also helps us quite a bit because it gives us a week without school before graduation. So school counselors, administrators can work with the senior class to clear up everything from finances to grades to get, get students to graduation. So you'll see that. Also, some partners on this, quite a bit of sharing with our seven feeder districts. There is some divergence from when we start and when we end, but we have very close connection on winter break. We all have the same spring break as well. So this calendar proposes, and there's one thing I will show you that we did that's just a little different. It also proposes that, that we maintain some of the holidays. You will hear a lot next year. This is part of our contract, but you'll hear a lot of waivers next year by school districts on holidays. And we included these because we believe next year is going to be a recovery year. About every six to eight weeks, we'll have a three-day weekend, which we believe gives staff and gives students a respite, a regroup. And some of the days this year that the state allowed for planning, I don't believe will be permissible next year. It's hard to imagine. So that's another important component. We start, our, our teaching and our staff returns for two days of institute day on August 12th and 13th. Students would report on August 16th. You'll see a number of dates that would bring us up to parent-teacher conferences. The format of that, interestingly enough, one of the things that was wildly efficient and very popular was online parent-teacher conferencing. Very high participation by parents. The following day would be a non-attendance day for students and for staff, one of those first breaks, with Monday Columbus Day or Indigenous Peoples' Day as a holiday as well. The vision that we had, the planning that we had last year to, on Veterans' Day, do quite a bit of by-campus celebration and education of, for our students. Our, our students, I just had a meeting last week, and, and our students just don't know, veterans, don't know the accomplishments of veterans. Only 7% of the American population is served. It's harder and harder to know a veteran or someone who served in a combat theater. And we just really feel a responsibility to bring that to our students. Now, this year, we had to do it virtually, but we're sure hoping next year we don't, we don't have to do that. So we would attend on November 11th. In order to do that, Wednesday, November 24th, the day before Thanksgiving, would be a holiday, and that's in line with where our feeder schools are as well. The semester would end on Wednesday, December 22nd, and our teaching staff felt that it was important to have Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday exams, continuous days. So we would exit on that Wednesday with the Christmas holiday on Saturday of that week. And then, saw a difference, just to highlight for board members, we have split, instead of having two institute days to start the year, we've split it. One institute day, second semester at the beginning of the year, semester, pardon me, one in March, and particularly on March 4th. And the reason why we selected March 4th is it's adjacent to the Kashmir Plaski Day, given the makeup of our community. We thought it was important to honor that day. But also, that is the day that DuPage County holds a massive countywide institute day. Fabulous math conference at Glenbarre North High School, great social studies conference, I believe at Naperville Central, English at Wheaton North High School, sort of mass professional development. And we've noticed many of our teachers take professional development days that day to attend those events. So rather than having substitutes, let's just facilitate that and have that as an institute day where we have some activities here at school, but also people might be going to those, those events. We have several early releases across the day that are part of our contract. One of those would still remain right before spring break. That's one of the worst days of student attendance, the Friday before spring break. And you can see where spring break would fall last week of March, basically in accordance with our feeder schools. Draping over the Easter holiday, two local holidays on the Friday and the Monday. Prom, let's dream. That's, that's going to happen. Last day of school, May 27th, and emergency days the, the week after Memorial Day and before graduation. The consensus of this committee, and this doesn't govern for all emergency days, and emergency days can only be called when they're called because weather isn't the only emergency. Water mains and gas and electric can intervene. But using our e-learning certificate that Mrs. Christopher filed, and we've become expert at e-learning instead of using our emergency days, but we still have to have them in the calendar. So let me pause there and answer any questions. We'd bring this back to the board, you know, for a vote next month and then share it with our families. All right. Thank you. Thanks a lot. And thanks so much to the, the partnership, Mrs. Cooper, just having, you know, having that voice, really helpful.
Thank you.
Jump right into the maintenance report?
Maintenance report.
Well, kudos to Bill Thompson because every single time we have a break, like our past two remote weeks, Mr. Thompson and his crew are doing things. Now, they have fought mightily this winter. Excellent snow removal. Today, fighting the ice, they have been outstanding. So just so much going on in that department. All the initial stages of our project in the MIS here at East Campus are, are moving forward. Lot of great ideas. One idea that Mr. Dusterhoff and I were discussing is really working with Dr. Huntington to offer a vocational opportunity and open up a coffee cafe as part of that interior space renovation that could give some of the students in the CCC program some vocational experience right here and give us some great coffee, too. So, in, you know, renovating those interior spaces has become a priority to support us when we come back in, in the fall, hopefully for, for more full-time. But you'll notice one theme in here is ventilation, taking a look at ventilation, ensuring that ventilation is appropriate and the ventilation is a proper, also doing some remodeling and replacement and some signing. And if you take a look at our custodians, who've had kind of a different job, when we've been in these two-week sets, they're very busy doing all sorts of jobs, painting, touching up, helping. So, so much has been done. Next time you probably come back and you walk into the CWC, you'll see some of the environmental graphics we'll be putting up there. Including if you come to the district office, there is now hanging today a brand-new portrait of all of you that, as you come up the stairs at the district office. Anything to add, Mr. Thompson? Mel, we're just, yeah, just waiting for this weather to hold the warm on and everything else. The biggest debate in the state is fitness and clearance of football fields and lacrosse fields and soccer fields and how people are going to get snow off those fields and make sure that those fields aren't hard as a rock, you know, when our athletes start competing on them. So, another job, another job to tackle. That's the maintenance report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. All right. Next, we have the capital project expenditure and interfund transfer summaries. Are there any questions for Ms. Croy on those?
Just our monthly.
Just our monthly, thank you. All right. All right. That is it. All right. I just need a motion to enter into closed session. Motion to enter into closed session to confidentially discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity under ILCS 120/2C1 and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees under chapter five of the ILCS 120/2C2, and litigation when in action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting under section five IL, under the ILCS 120/2C11. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All right. It's been motioned by Lopez Caneva and second by Dr. Shaw. Roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Bickus?
Yes.